I'd ask to keep her and her family certainly. In your thoughts, we also are aware that there was a teacher here at the Higgins Middle School, Mr. McCabe, he and his family suffered the tragic loss of their daughter. And we wanted to keep her and her family and Mr. McCabe in our thoughts as well. I'm getting a lot of text messages saying that we're not on audio.
I'm getting the same.
Why don't we take a moment, let's check with Jim. And I just want to make sure that's corrected, but I'm getting a lot of text messages saying that we do not have audio, which is a problem. Okay. Yeah, would you mind?
He's coming.
Is anybody else getting messages like up to that effect?
I haven't.
I think you can.
Thank you, Jim.
I think you're on.
Okay. All right, why don't we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and please rise, the flag is over to my left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of January 12, 2020.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, you've heard his motion to approve the minutes of January 12, 2020, the regular school committee meeting, it was seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, approval of bills, we have a couple of warrants, Mrs. Carpenter?
Like to make a motion to approve warrant number 4679 dated January 26, 2021, the amount of $38,826.22, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant 4679, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to approve warrant number 4684 dated January 26, 2021, and the amount of $651,495.57, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion made by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of the warrant number 4684, seconded by Mr. Olympio, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Thank you, that was all.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Carpenter, I know we have some educators here with us today, why don't, no objection, maybe we can go out of order?
No objection.
I'll turn it over to you Superintendent Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we are fortunate to have some educators from the McCarthy School here today that want to talk about an exciting initiative that they're planning for beginning in February, so if Ms. Caffey and Mrs. Toly, if you want to join us.
Perfect timing.
Thank you for having us, I just wanted to start with just a quick round of introductions, do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Um, Amy Emery, I'm a youth teacher.
Allison Silva, kindergarten.
Frankie Marra, I'm a services principal and good great student.
So they're part of our leadership team and is helping to sort of put this week, sorry, around, because there's a parking mark, and I'm clearly out of shape, um, so they're helping to help us put this week of caring and sharing in place, do you want to introduce yourself too?
Sure, my name is Rachel Caffey, I'm also a kindergarten teacher at the McCarthy.
And she is instrumental in our week of caring and share. So this all sort of started back in the fall, and it started with some discussions around Black Lives Matter, and we sort of realized there was a lot of people feeling uncomfortable in having discussions, and so we sort of said, well, what can we do to build a level of comfort, and so we started with our staff and just doing some small activities like, um, we watched The Single Story and discussed that, and then we also did, excuse me, an activity called I Wish My Teacher Knew, and if you've never seen that, it is an amazing thing to Google, and we had the most amazing responses from our students, everything and anything from really personal things that they wish their teacher knew, to my teacher's amazing, um, and it was really powerful for us to learn how much the kids had to say, but wasn't, they weren't always telling us, and so this sort of brought us to where we are today, and then Rachel way back, I don't know, November, December, came to me and said, I have this idea for a Black Lives Matter week of action, and I was like, ooh, like, that sounds a little scary, just to be honest, and we took that and we turned it into this, and you'll see, amazing week of really promoting our core values and promoting all of our students and equity and access, and so I will turn it over to Rachel to tell you all about it.
Thank you, Ms. [inaudible]. So there is a quote from PBS about Black History Month, and it says, "We use Black History Month to teach empathy, cooperation, and the commonality of a shared goal. It is also a way to teach children how to connect their personal experiences with the larger world." So this is really the central message for our week, this is what we wanted to work towards, so in doing so, we broke the week down into three guiding principles that you'll see up here, identity, perspective, and engagement, with the central message being Black History Month is about inclusion. A simple way to say this, identity is me, perspective is she, or he, or they, and engagement is we, so by using this structure, we're able to let students color with their own lived experiences, focusing on parts of their identity that they need to share or engage with, getting the perspective of their classmates, and being able to engage in the process of putting those two things together. So you will see all of the program components listed up here, for example, under identity, there are a few books, there are videos, songs, and mindfulness, there are writing prompts and activities, and then additional teacher tools, so in addition to those three things, we've also added some things for teachers specifically, so there is a resource on terms and definitions with some of the narratives and the language around how to have these conversations, there are book lists for further reading for their teachers, um, there is also empirical support, because teachers are professionals and they should know why we are doing things and not just that we should be doing them, so there are a great many considerations that went into this, first and foremost, that it is meaningful and accessible to all students, and that we allow students to color with their own experiences, so instead of being overly prescriptive, we use identity, perspective, engagement to see what they want to share, and what they are feeling, and what they want to hear from their classmates. Age appropriate for preschool and up, as we are elementary school, all of the resources have the flexibility to be used with different grade levels, some of them, you'll see, like the books and the activities may be more closely geared for fifth grade, whereas songs and mindfulness make it so that our special education preschool classes can access it as well, because all students deserve to be able to access this kind of content. Suitable for hybrid and remote learning, that was very important this year, so everything is a link, including the books, everything can be assigned remotely or for in-person use, and we also minimized the amount of materials needed for the activities, so if students are doing these things at home, they don't need a lot of art supplies, they can easily do it at home as well as in school. Little to no teacher planning, this was something very important, because engagement means teachers too, and means that they want to be able to participate with their students, so instead of having something that they needed to build, this is a resource that they need to explore, if they are given the time, they can look and see, I want this part and this part, and use it and have it ready to go, so with the books, oh, absolutely.
Can I add on? So one of the things that Rachel isn't telling you is she put this program together for us, this wasn't a program that we could go out there and get, um, so she really pulled all of her resources, all of her colleagues that she knows from other, her life before being a teacher, and pulled that together for us, um, we're also taking our February staff meeting to provide the teachers the time to be able to go through all of these amazing resources and plan as a grade level, what do they want to focus on, how do they want to put it in place, because we know time is so critical, that we want to give them the time to really be able to go through the material, and also to be able to enjoy it and have fun, and so we don't want this to be one more thing, but we want it to be something that they look forward to.
And we wanted to engage with our stakeholders as well, so the PTO and the student government, we invited to participate, the PTO, we asked to co-sponsor the food drive, which is one of our activities for engagement, so they will be helping to transport food to Haven from hunger, and the student gov is putting together a video to advertise, since they can't walk around to the classes this year. In addition to aligning with our McCarthy School values, it also aligns with our district value of hope, having high expectations for caring and sharing, optimism around improvement and progress in these areas, personalized learning and experience and in relationship for our students, especially our students of color, and equity and access for our students and our staff. As you'll see, there are a lot of things that we hope that our students can get out of this week, as well as our staff, but if nothing else, they will have time to reflect on their identities, engage with their classmates, and hopefully have a cathartic and positive experience, and build into our existing core value work that we can take into the future and continue to build off of. If we have questions, we would love to answer them.
So thank you, Mrs. Toly and Ms. Caffey, great presentation, and you know, I think that you did a wonderful job of bringing something that, you know, maybe was a topic that could be polarizing, and really changing it, and making it more inclusive, and having an opportunity to bring people together, so I really appreciate that, anyone from the committee have any comments, or? Thank you all for this presentation and the work that you've done here, and obviously the work that you've done, you know, over this extended period of months and this difficult time, you have all done so much, I think this was a fantastic presentation, I love it, um, you know, the times we're living in, I think we certainly can appreciate more of these conversations, I think it's so helpful, and you know, you're embracing, letting these students embrace who they are, I think that's so incredibly important, you know, um, someone once said to me, and I have seen it now, you know, kind of the old expression of when people used to say, you know, you don't, you don't see color, when in reality is you're now recognizing that, because that's a part of who people are, it's recognizing their experiences and, you know, their, their shared lives, so thank you so much for what you're doing, and I appreciate you contributing in our school community with this program, and I hope to see it continue, and I'd love to see it in some of our other schools as well, so thank you so much for what you've done here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anodis, very well said, and I agree with Dr. Vidal, that was outstanding, I appreciate that, that is hitting right at the heart of so many things, so thank you for that, thank you for your work, uh, anybody else, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, that presentation and what you're going to do is just so timely, and it's in line with the equity and diversity goals that we are trying to make headway with, and, um, I think that it's going to be very beneficial for the students, and I would love to see, um, Dr. Vidal, if you could let us know what the other schools are doing in honor of, um, Black History Month, or to honor Dr. Martin Luther King, whatever, whatever the schools are doing, if you could just let us know, uh, but this is wonderful, and I know that's a lot of work too, to pull that together, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, all right, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll go back to the regular agenda, we do have some continued business, Mrs. Dunn, can I ask you to, as you always do, give us the update on the Welch School MSBA project, please?
Sure. We're moving right along, and we're hitting different benchmarks that are kind of exciting, and what we're coming up with, uh, in two weeks, February 8th, we will be having our second community meeting, and what that will be is a public presentation, where everyone, the public, the elected officials, the neighbors, everyone will be able to watch this presentation and learn more about the project as it's going forward, we're in the stage right now where the architects and the owners' project manager have, preparing to present the school building committee with several different options on the, um, the recommended improvements to the Welch, so on February 4th, the Welch School Building Committee will meet and be given a lot of information about what the architects at OPM have been looking at, on the 8th will be a community meeting, where we'll be explaining that to everyone, and then on February 18th, there'll be an additional meeting of the school building committee, and at which time, they will take an important vote to submit the recommended schematic programs to the MSBA, and then MSBA will take that, they will examine all the numbers and the plans, and then they will have a board meeting in April, and get back to the school building committee and the community of PBD to let us know what we will be proceeding with, it's been a real eye-opener with some of the ideas that they have, the way that they're working, you know, the educational program, and the concerns about that, along with the building, and, um, you know, it really is an amazing project, it's a lot of fun to participate and to see how this progresses, so we'll have some more news for you at the next meeting, um, and you'll definitely all be getting notices of the, uh, community meeting as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone had any.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, I appreciate as always your work, Mr. Hockman is also on the committee, appreciate your time and efforts, another project we take another step forward towards, which is great.
Definitely.
All right, I'd like to go to the superintendent's report, uh, Dr. Vidal has some items for us, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, so the next item is another school, uh, building project that we have, a little bit of a smaller project, uh, but I was very pleased to announce that we were invited into the Accelerator Repair Project for the West Elementary School roof, and so the next step in that process is to take a vote, uh, and so I'll turn it over to Mr. Amico.
Thank you, Chief of the Committee, um, motion to request funding for the appropriation of $21,000 for the cost of a feasibility study for repairs and/or replacement of roofs to the West Elementary School building.
Second.
Thank you, you've heard the motion made by Mr. Amico?
Actually, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to read the whole motion.
Yep, you have to.
Just for the record, it'll be placed in the, uh, in the document, it resolves that the school committee requests the city council, the city of PBD appropriate the amount of $21,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study to determine the need and cost of potential repair and/or replacement of roofs of the West Elementary School located at 15 Bow Street, PBD, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of PBD may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the City of PBD West Elementary School Building Committee, to meet this appropriation, the school committee requests the city council authorize the city treasurer, with approval of the mayor, authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to match general law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, the city of PBD acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the city of PBD incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city of PBD, and further provided that the appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the city of PBD to the exempt amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by match general law 59, section 21C, proposition two and a half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the city of PBD and the MSBA, and that, and that this vote be adopted as read, salute.
Second, thank you, Mr. Olympio, you've heard the motion made by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Ms., excuse me, Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Olympio, any questions?
Congratulations.
Yes.
This is great, it really is.
This is really good news, this school is in desperate need of this work, and very happy that another MSBA proposal was, um, approved by the MSBA, we've had a terrific partner with, partnership with them over the years, so, roll call, vote, please, on approval of that motion? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That's all, there, the next item is an update on pool testing, we talked about it the last week, and have a little bit more information, uh, and we did have some discussions with our unions and, uh, a discussion with public health department, so, just a quick review of what pool testing is, it involves mixing anywhere between 10 and 25 samples through swabs, and we talked about these would be nasal swabs, in either a batch or a pool, and taking that sample and doing a PCR test, and the test would be performed once a week with consent, uh, of all, in, in, uh, all involved, and you're participating, it's a short nasal swab, and the results, the results come back in 24 to 48 hours, if the whole pool is negative, then everyone is assumed to be negative, and if the entire pool, if the pool is positive, you would call everyone back in the pool for, uh, the testing individual, so, a little bit more about the process for applying, so, we've had another webinar about exactly what needs to be done, so we would need to first, we need to authorize school application, which is on the Department's website, it's free lengthy, uh, it's a spreadsheet with follow-up review, we have to update some information, and then new ones for the school, uh, we also need to, if we need to put into an appliance for this, we need to do a state of insurance for all school personnel, which is one of the big ones, we need to do a state of insurance, uh, we need to make sure that we agree to consent to privacy of all involved, that we would have certain testing protocols to be in there, we have some protocols for isolation, quarantine, and contact tracing, we need to abide by, make sure they're trained and compliant to all of the laws, uh, and after that, we need to obtain consent forms from all participants, students and parents, they have a model consent form, which is available on the website, and then we need to obtain a standing decision order in order to do the reflux testing through biometric, and then we would need to train all the staff, uh, first the nurses to do the reflux testing, and then the staff to either collect the samples or to be trained and served, so the process would be, we would need to establish a site of a swabbing schedule, complete by home room, uh, we would establish swab stations and materials, the protocol, uh, coupled with a courier, to make sure that goes out, we schedule an assignment for personnel in the building to do the testing, and who would be responsible for courier services and the reflux testing, so, an example of how this might look in terms of implementation, so for example, cohort A could be swabbed on Monday, their results would come back on Wednesday, and if they were in a positive pool, people would need to come back to the building to be retested or reflux tested on the Wednesday, and if they were negative in that test, they could return to the pool, uh, in this case cohort B would be swabbed on Tuesday, uh, at some point during school day, and their results would come back on Thursday, they would have to, uh, do reflux testing on Thursday if they were in a positive pool, some of the concerns on this one is the timing of getting the result back from the initial test, and then, uh, having cohort B come back on a Thursday when school's in session, uh, and there are students in the building, and the nurses are attending to, attending to the people who are there, uh, so having occupied buildings for reflux testing is a bit of a concern for us, uh, another opportunity where we wouldn't have to have occupied buildings, we would be swabbing cohort A on Thursday, and then do the reflux testing on Saturday, cohort B would be swabbed on Friday, and the reflux testing would be on Sunday, uh, so concerns with that would be getting our staff involved on the weekend, and asking people to come back, uh, on the weekend to be reflux tested in order to come in, so, uh, still a lot, a lot of logistical concerns that we have here, uh, and then we consider budgetary implications, so I met with, uh, the public health department yesterday to say, what would it take to do this district wide, uh, because that's the additional thing, is they want all the students, and it can be, it can send, but they want all the students and every staff member, including bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and discorians, of course, everyone has to consent, but they, they want everybody to do it, so, if we do this, the recommendation from the public health department, which I would also favor would be that, in order to do this right, we need a district-wide coordinator, so we need to hire a full-time FTE to coordinate this effort, we also, if the nurses are doing the reflux testing, we'd be taking them away from their duties as contact tracers, so we need to hire an additional nurse, uh, to do that contact tracing in the district, uh, after the six-week, after the six-week pilot, we would need to hire a courier service for 10 weeks, it's included in the pilot.
Thank you, oh, that's louder. Sorry about that, so, after, after the six-week pilot, we would need to engage in a contract with a courier service for the final 10 weeks of the school year, uh, for the final 10 weeks, we would also need to pay $5 per swab to continue the pilot, which is about $25,000 per week, so, we are estimating that the cost to do the pilot, which is a free pilot, but we have to hire two FTEs, would be about $125,000 as a cost to the district, and the total cost would be somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000, uh, the state has asked us to use federal stimulus money, uh, but as I mentioned previously, uh, we'd be looking to utilize that stimulus money to save jobs as we did last year, and to, and to bring staff back next year, uh, so, some concerns that were brought up from both the union and from the public health department, is just having the staffing capacity to effectively implement this program, uh, what the role of the, of the staff would be, so asking teachers to either swab students, or be trained observers, and make sure that, that they're following up with that, or asking Paris to do that, it'd be a little bit of a change for the nurses, to be able to do this reflux testing, there's some current concerns, if we're testing students during the school day, that there would be loss of instructional time, uh, we'd be concerned about our sustainability beyond the six-week pilot program, and then there are some legal implications, what would happen if we unknowingly tested someone who didn't provide consent, um, is there a potential stigma for non-participation, or is there a conflict that might arise between individuals who are in a certain pool, and, and if they got called back, you know, is there a stigma involved to the people in their pool, uh, so, you know, we were taking all of this into consideration, um, and one, one big concern that we have is if the- have is if the testing company does not return the results back fast enough, are there any implications if the timelines aren't met by the testing company of us withholding people from school or potentially bringing sick people into school? So, there's a lot of concerns for a district our size. So, just to put this into perspective, this is a three-week, you know, 14-day cases over a three-week period that I've shown before. So, the big number that we look at is during the holiday surge, we're at 115 cases per 100,000. Last Thursday, when it was announced, we were at 110, and so we've seen a drop. So, we're coming down, which is, this is very encouraging for us, so we're down to 81. And so, you know, when we release those on Thursday, we will see that the numbers are getting better in our community with post-holiday surge, and we need to stay vigilant with our health and safety protocols. So, at this time, when we're looking at the entire district, we're not recommending pursuing pool testing for the PBD public schools. We would potentially consider looking into this maybe for one school or just the secondary schools, but right now, we're not recommending a full rollout with this. I just think that the capacity isn't there. So, one thing that we do want to focus on is continuing our bimonthly testing that we've been doing here at the Higgins. That's been very effective. We want to make sure that we support the Health Department through their vaccine distribution. They've done an unbelievable job, and you know, they're continuing to do that, so we want to make sure that they have the capacity to continue with those vaccines. And, you know, as many of you know, we'll talk a little bit later about a letter that we've received as far as the written communications, but we really want to continue our advocacy and put our efforts into making sure that we advocate for vaccines for educators and potentially prioritizing them moving forward. So, that's my update on pool testing. I'll pause. Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. That was very thorough. Any questions or comments, Mr. Olympio?
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. I fully support your position in not recommending this at this time. I mean, that's probably the best news I've seen all week, just that chart right there. We're certainly trending in the right direction. So, yeah, and the cost is staggering, and needless to say, I share some of those other concerns. So, again, great work, you know, with the Health Department and the teachers and your staff administration. It seems like we are doing the right things in the City of PBD, and the numbers speak for themselves, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Appreciate that. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair. Dr. Vidal, thank you for bringing this information to us. A couple of weeks ago, when I first saw this, it looked like a great opportunity. Now that we're looking at it, it seems like a really convoluted mathematical problem, and I wouldn't wish it upon our Health Department to have to go through all those processes and the cost itself, as Mr. Olympio mentioned, is staggering. And again, it's just so nice to see that the numbers are coming down. Hopefully, we're heading in the right direction. It looks like we are, but thank you for bringing this information, and I also agree with Mr. Olympio. This isn't something that we should probably be considering at this time.
Any other comments or questions, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be honest, I'm so disappointed because I really thought that this would be another way to ensure protection for all of our staff and students in the schools, and I thought that it would help give people confidence, too, with the way that the programs are going. Knowing that the state would recommend that we use the federal stimulus funds for this really is disappointing because those funds are set up for educational needs. This is a health need. And since the beginning of the pandemic, it has been proven over and over again that the schools are so much more essential to society than people ever realized. The schools have had to feed the children. They have tried everything to educate. You've had to upgrade all the technology and change midstream to get coursework out to our students. It's just, it is just really frustrating to see that what sounded like something that was going to be very helpful was just going to get dumped on education again, and I am really, I'm more than disappointed, I'm angry, to see that they would do this because they were holding this out. It really sounded great, and I have to agree with what you're saying because the cost of that alone is just cost prohibitive. And to know that the vaccines are out there, I'm definitely going to support you with your efforts to get vaccines for educators because, again, education is essential. And if you listen to some of the things, you know, being said all along through the pandemic, that, you know, if we don't follow through on what we're supposed to do with education, society's going to collapse. So, I've been hopeful that once the pandemic is gone, people will now realize how intrinsically important education is to everyone, whether they have children in the schools or not. But this shows that at the top level, they just don't get it yet. So, I'll keep praying for the vaccines because right now, that would have helped, but not with all those parameters. What a disappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Anozi?
Just very quickly, I'll round it out because I was excited about this as my colleagues were two weeks ago, you know, in the sense we saw the product on the shelves and then we read the fine print two weeks later, and it's not a good deal. So, you know, I don't want anyone to think we're resting on our laurels here. You know, certainly continue to get tested when the opportunity is presented to you. Keep your distance, wear your mask, stay safe. I'm thrilled about those numbers as well. I keep saying, you know, two weeks is like a year, but we're getting there. The light is coming. Keep doing what we need to do. And, you know, it is, as Mrs. Dunn said, it really would be nice if there wasn't as much red tape and obstruction in a sense with just trying to do something as simple as this, but that's where we are right now. So, again, take the opportunity to get tested, keep your distance from folks. We're getting there, and let's keep working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anozi. Okay, turn it back to you, Dr. Vidal.
Thank you, and I'll just say, you know, I agree with many of the things that were said by the committee, and I, too, was excited about this, and I think that's one of the reasons why we really want to dig in deep and do our due diligence to do the research that we did. You know, this is maybe a good opportunity for some smaller districts, some districts that might not be in school just yet, where they really, you know, they don't have the same testing capacity that we do. But I think that, you know, when we look at it for our district, we need to really make the right decisions around what works for PBD. So, I appreciate that. We'll continue to keep doing as much research as we can, and we'll do everything we can to take the next steps and make sure that we're getting our kids as safe as possible. So, I do have, the last item is more, some more happy news for the School Department. So, I have a few donations that I want to bring to the committee, and we're really excited. So, the South School received two $500 donations from ExxonMobil via Chuck Holden, the president of Holden Oil, and Mustafa Musur, the manager of the Mobile Mart. And so, we could take those individually, and what we'd like to do is if there's a motion to accept the donations with gratitude, we'll start with the check from Mr. Holden, from the president of Holden Oil, for the amount of $500 to the South Memorial School, and with gratitude, and I'd like to send a letter of gratitude on behalf of the committee.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Anozi?
Yes.
We also had a check for $500 from Mustafa Musur, the manager of Mobile Mart. We'd also like to accept that with gratitude and send a letter to Mr. Musur.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor? That's a vote.
Great. And PBD High School was lucky enough to, or fortunate enough, I should say, to receive a $1,000 donation from New York Life via Dan Collins. So, Mr. Collins has really supported PBD High School and really been a huge advocate to have his company and continue to donate money that has really gone to the kids at PBD High School. So, we'd like to thank not only Mr. Collins, but also New York Life for their continued generosity and accept this with gratitude.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It really is amazing what Mr. Collins has been doing for the schools, and just so everyone knows, he is, he has been scheduled to receive an award from us, from the Mass Association of School Committees, since prior to the pandemic. And what MASC is going to do for those awards, because we want to honor people, and they have everything ready, and as soon as they can, they're going to come out to the district if that's what we want, or they will do it at the conference, either way. But he has not been forgotten, and really, he certainly keeps going with his gifts to the schools. It really is very nice of him to do that.
Absolutely. Well said. On the motion, Mr. Amico?
Through the chair, I also want to thank Mr. Collins. Dan is often not only donating, but he's also often given a lot of his time to across, the Girls Across program, and we could probably find him out on the field somewhere to give him that award if we had to. Because that's where you can find him. But thank you, Dan Collins, and also thank you again, Chuck Holden and Holden Roof. These are people and companies that, you know, continuously donate to us, and it's something to think about when we go out and we have auctions, you know, where we spend our money, where we get our gas. So, just remember that to the public. Thank you. Yeah, well said. I mean, these are just not one-time donations. Chuck and Martha Holden, Holden's Oil, they are, and they have been in other systems in so many different ways, in different events, supporting programs, supporting students. And Mr. Collins, the very same thing. He's been heavily involved in coaching and volunteering his time for many, many years. It's just PBD people giving back to the city, and we're very fortunate to have residents like that. So, all in favor of that? That's a vote.
And our last one, Ross Mortgage Company from Danvers recently donated 10 cases of disinfectant wipes. So, Elizabeth Nardelli reached out and they wanted to do something for the schools, and they were able to donate 10 cases of wipes. We were able to deliver a case to every single school in PBD, and so we'd like to, they wrote us a little note that's nice, that gave us a little card, and that's in our packet, and I'd like to thank them, and we'll also send them a letter with gratitude.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Okay. For the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor of that motion? That's a unanimous vote.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Next is public participation. Do we have anyone looking to speak this evening?
We have some attendees. If they would like to speak, they could please raise their hand. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we do have one written communication. It was the letter to Governor Baker from the Noashore Superintendent's Roundtable regarding classifying educators as Phase 1. That's to be received tonight. Any?
And I'll just give a little background on it, so.
Motion received.
Thank you.
Motion received by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Anozi. All in favor of receiving that written communication? Turn it over to you, Dr. Vidal.
Thank you, and I'd just like to say that, you know, we're really working together with the union, and we really wanted to prioritize bringing more students into school and making sure that our teachers are prioritized, that they feel safe coming to school, and, you know, we'd like to really try to get some advocacy to bring the teachers up either into Phase 1 or to the top of Phase 2 and try to get them their vaccinations as soon as possible so that we can return as many students to school as we can. So, this is some advocacy that we're doing on behalf of the superintendents. We've been fortunate enough that it has gotten a little bit of publicity, and it's been a nice thing that people came to PBD and recognized that we're leading the way in this advocacy. And, you know, I'd just like to thank the committee for their support on this, and, you know, this is something that we'd really like to continue to push and encourage Governor Baker to consider moving educators up to Phase 1. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Subcommittee reports. Education, Mr. Hockman? No report at this time. Okay. Finance Subcommittee, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Carpenter. I know we have an item today, a couple items.
Yes, thank you. So, I have a few items to report on. The Finance Negotiation Subcommittee met on the 21st of January at the request of the union for impact bargaining. One of the first items that we discussed was the confidentiality of the meetings. In all of my years and years past, those have always been an executive session, and what was being discussed was not made public until the MOUs were ratified, and then those were public. I did request that the memorandum of understanding is included in your package tonight as a reminder of the agreements that we made with the union. Recently, the union president has called several times during public participation, and she has discussed many items that this board has been unable to answer to in public. So, one of the first things that we did during this impact bargaining session was ask about They responded that it is no longer confidential. So, all of our bargaining, everything that goes on in those meetings will be public from now on. So, with that being said, I will report on what we discussed. One of the questions that the union asked about was pool testing. They were concerned as how that would be rolled out, who would be responsible. At that time, we did not have as much information as we had this evening, Dr. Vidal just reported on, so we didn't have an answer for them. They were interested in who would be testing the kids and how that would happen. They also questioned us about the vaccination rollout, which is the phases. Ms. Henry did call here and express concern that we were not moving educators up to Phase 1. It was discussed in that meeting that that is not our ability, but we do want to respect them and support them and get them moved to Phase 1. And Dr. Vidal had a letter, lots of support, worked with Ms. Henry to advocate for them to be moved to Phase 1. But we are not the Health Department. It is not our decision. We did host the spot for vaccinations, which I'm quite proud of and happy to have our buildings available for those vaccinations, but we are not the ones giving them out. They also asked if there was a waiting period after they received their vaccination. We did not have that information. They would like to know what the plans are to vaccinate the staff, where and the time of day. We did not have that information. They also expressed facility concerns, and they wanted to go to Dr. Vidal directly, I believe, to discuss any type of cleaning, kind of start at the top and go down. We had advised that we're going to follow the protocol. All of the things that were mentioned previously by Ms. Henry, I'd just like to remind everyone that there is a process of grievance, so if there's something that's not being followed in the memorandum of understanding, we can be grieved for it, and none of these things have come our way. So, in regards to the cleaning that she mentioned during public participation, there was nothing sent to us in that regard. They asked that if 20% of the staff quarantined, they want us to be remote for five days. They asked if the city rate exceeds 10% for five days, that all schools go remote for five days. We did not respond. We did propose getting our at-risk students in on Wednesdays. I'm not finished with my report, but I'd like Dr. Vidal to explain what the proposal was that we gave to the union.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. So, we've been in a hybrid model. It's been pretty successful from the beginning of the year. We know that there's been some bumps in the road. Dr. Lord and I have visited all the schools as part of our entry plan and really trying to listen to a number of focus groups. And one thing we consistently hear when we talk to the teachers and we talk to the parents is that Wednesday remote days for our most at-risk, substantially separate special education students just is not working. It's very difficult. Many of our teachers feel as though that, you know, they feel very close to these families and their heart breaks for the parents who are really struggling with the kids and they don't have the routine. So, we identified 33 substantially separate classrooms that we would like to bring back on Wednesdays for five days a week. We understand that this is part of a negotiation and that, you know, during this pilot period, whether it's a six or eight-week pilot, we would offer people who are not having kids in front of them the option to work from home on those remote Wednesdays for other teachers. So, you know, we thought that was a reasonable offer. We'd really like to work to try to help our families and the teachers who are struggling to do that, and so we'd like to make that formal proposal to the union.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Thank you, Dr. Vidala. Couple of other things that I just want to address that during public participation, when the union president calls, some of the comments that were made, you know, we're not able to respond to during public participation. But we do have that opportunity now, because she did call as the union president. Something that I felt very upset by was that she was tired of the school committee praising teachers. And I'm not really sure where something like that can come from. I believe she called it toxic positivity. I call it appreciating teachers who are doing their jobs. She talked about $2,000 that we did not acknowledge that they raised. Nobody ever sent me a letter that they raised $2,000 or what it was for. I would be more than happy to thank whoever did that. She talked about the personal work schedule of a school committee member who is an educator, who does not have the ability to go in every day if he wishes. She took it to a personal level. There are school committee members here who do go into work every day. Myself, every day, with students, no masks. I don't think it was appropriate for her to do that to that school committee member. I will not say who it is. That's up to him. But I don't find it appropriate at all. Many of the demands that were made during public participation, she was not bargaining in good faith. So moving forward, as they agree to, we will do it on the floor. We are responsible for a lot of people in this district. We are responsible for education. We are responsible for teachers, students, a whole slew of people. Not just one person. Moving forward, if anybody would like to discuss any of the issues that we are negotiating with the union, please feel free to do so on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
On, on, on the topic?
Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Through you to Dr. Vidala. I'm happy to see the letter that the superintendents of the, I think it was the North Shore, the entire North Shore, put out. And I'd love to see teachers and school personnel's ability to vaccinate accelerated and moved up. My hope has been throughout this school year to have all students in school five days a week. I think the science that we've seen shows that the virus is not being transmitted in schools. We're seeing a gradual decline in numbers over the course of the month of January, which we're happy about. I think Mr. Olympio brought that up earlier. But while we're opening up and negotiating publicly now, which frankly is a huge disappointment, never happened in my years on the school committee, and I think it's unfortunate. But if this is the way we're going, going to operate moving forward until we can have another, until further notice, I guess, I'd like the school committee negotiating team to ask for a meeting with Unit A and work towards a memorandum of understanding whereby all students who choose to go to school five days a week are permitted and able to do so. I'd like to see that we continue to keep the option available for parents, as we have with staff, to learn remotely. I know that in other school districts, I believe it's grades K to five, are going at three feet of social distancing. I think at three feet of social distancing, we can get every student in the elementary schools, all elementary schools, for five days. So if you could take that up, Ms., through the chair, Ms. Carpenter, I would appreciate that.
Through the chair, Mr. Hockman, I will, I wrote down your words. I will bring that forward. Just like to say, I have a great deal of respect for our union, and I as well have never bargained in public before. And this was brought forward because things were playing out in the newspaper and during public participation. So we did want to clarify that with them, which is why we are where we are right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the mayor, Dr. Vidala. Thank you for that report, and thank you for that letter. And thank you to the other 28 superintendents and local unions who, who want us, want us, I say us because I'm a teacher, get moved up into the vaccine, to get a vaccine, I should say. I, I wanted to talk a little bit about, and thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for, for doing that. I appreciate that. I just wanted to talk to, or about the participation from a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to be clear that our motto in PBD for our, our kids, for our schools are every student, every day. And the way that we do that as a committee is, I feel as though we are a very pro-teacher committee. We've done so much for the teachers. We've advocated for the teachers. And when we praise teachers, it's, it's real praise. It's not toxic, whatever we wanted to call it. When I, when I praise a teacher, I do it because I, I feel that the teacher deserves it, and many teachers deserve it for what they do every day, especially during this time. I also want to bring us back, over the last five years or so that I've been on this committee, during funding and budget times, we've, we've gone to the mayor, we've gone to the city council, and they've, they've helped us out to, to help save teaching jobs and to, and to bud, and to balance our budgets. So I just want to make that clear, that that's on the record, that this is a pro-teacher committee, because we put our kids first. And the best way to put our kids first is to help the people who, who help the kids, and those are the teachers. And I say help, because before any learning goes on, we have to help children, because all kids are kids of need and kids at risk. Also, since March, this committee here has advocated for teachers. Every teacher has received a paycheck. No teacher has gone without a paycheck. Businesses have shut down, businesses have closed, people have lost their jobs. Every teacher has been paid fully, even received their raise, and rightfully so, because they deserve it. Teachers deserve it. But again, this is a committee that is pro-teacher. During our MOU pro, MOU process and negotiations, we cared about our teachers. We wanted to make sure that the high-risk teachers were taken care of. We didn't want to, want to put them in harm's way. And to hear that this committee doesn't care about teachers, it's very discouraging, very, very discouraging. In regards to my own personal schedule that was mentioned, I can assure you, I've been working in Revere for 20 years, and I follow my contract. I work hard. I give more than I probably, my contract allows. And the reason why my work schedule is three days a week is because that's what was negotiated during the MOU. If we had negotiated five days a week, I'd go to school five days a week. They negotiated six days a week. I'd go in six days a week. I just want to say again that this is a, I'm proud of this committee. I'm proud of our chair, and I'm proud of elected officials in PBD, because we are really pro-teacher, because we care about our kids. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Dunn?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to request that if we pursue the negotiations and discussion, that prior to doing that, that we have a chance to meet with Sharon Cameron. The reason we were hybrid and remote was because we were following the CDC guidelines. That's what put us into these models. I don't think the guideline has changed as far as the six-foot versus three-foot distance. If I'm incorrect, please correct me. But that's why we were in hybrid. We have provisions put into place about what we will do if we had to go remote, which we, we did recently. And I, I really would like to hear from, from input from Sharon Cameron, because she is a very, very great resource. She's given us all kinds of very clear information. She gets it from, from the medical, the scientific viewpoint. And I think that's what we need to hear about as far as what we, what we can do going forward. And I'd also like to ask if there is any definitive research as far as the difference between students and the teachers. I know that one of the concerns out there, while we have the information that said there is no in-school transmission, have there been any studies done on children as far as we know that they react differently with this virus? Is there anything to show that they are asymptomatic, and that they could be in school without knowing that they had COVID, and never knowing? And, I mean, we hear about these incidents a lot, but with adults. I haven't seen anything about children, and I would like to know if that is the case with schools. In Europe, they are looking at that, and they are finding there is a problem. I think we need very good medical and scientific guidance. We've used it in the past to get to this point, and I think we need to continue to do that. The goal is, and always has been, to go back to school five days a week. But we also have to balance that with our obligation to protect everyone, teachers and students, because we are protecting the community at large by whatever we do in the schools. And again, as I said, there's a big drive to get schools open all the time, because people realize how essential the school department really is to society. But it also has to be balanced with safety, and that's a very important piece right now. Everyone is learning as we go, and I admit that. But we still need to have some good, solid advice before we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympio?
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Carpenter, well said earlier. I appreciate your leadership on that committee. You just, it's invaluable, and I agree with a lot of the points that you, really all the points that you made. And it was disappointing. I have a lot of teachers that walk through my office, and I have a, you know, real good relationship with really all of them. And it was really disappointing to hear somebody in public to call us out that we don't care about the teachers. That's just, it was very disappointing, and it's untrue, and I took it to heart. I really did take that to heart, and it was really uncalled for. I, I think everything we do, we consider everybody. The kids are the ones that are paying the ultimate price, because kids are not being hospitalized, they're not dying from this, thank God. And the children that, they're a small percentage that are at risk, they're, they're at home and, and being protected. But the kids are the ones that are paying the ultimate price. It's, I think that's what has been shown. And getting, and I appreciate, Dr. Vidala, you advocating for the Wednesday, because I can tell you, for myself and for other parents, Wednesday is the worst day of the week. It is the worst day of the week. And I feel terrible for the teachers that do the best they can trying to teach special needs kids on Wednesdays. It doesn't work. And again, the kids are paying the price. You're right. As a, as a city, we are making sacrifices because of, you know, elderly and vulnerable people. But the children who are relatively healthy, they're the ones that are really doing all the sacrificing, because their childhood is being taken away from them. And as soon as we, we can, we have to do everything we can to get back right on track. And it's just really, it gets to me. It gets to me that these, they, obesity, depression. I have a lot of people that talk to me at my office, their kids, their personalities are changing. They're cha, and what are we doing? I mean, what are we doing? And you sometimes, I mean, we have a non-scientific poll. 80% of probably the parents out there want their kids in school five days a week. And I, and I bet you, most parents who have conditions or have grandparents that have conditions would want their kids to live their childhood. I know myself, having a special needs child, that there are certain things that I wouldn't want the world to stop, because I have some limitations with my son. And we, we can't look at it that way. And most people want kids in school. They want them doing their activities. And it's, it's not 55%. It's probably 80, 90% of the people feel that way. And certainly, teachers that are at risk, and absolutely, we have, we've negotiated that feature in the memorandum of understanding. They can, they can teach remotely. We have those choices. But I don't know if there's a disconnect with the leadership and the rank and file, but I'm hearing two different things from the rank and file and the leadership. So we have to, as, I think we're all on the same page. We all have to get the kids back in sooner than later. And of course, do it safely. But there are other, isn't there an elementary school that has been going full-time in, in PBD, the private school? Yeah, yeah, right? Three, I mean, so what has there, I mean, how's that worked out? I, I, I mean, I, what's the difference? That's what I would like to know. I hear private schools are going full-time as well. What's the difference? What is the big difference? I'll let everybody probably guess what the difference is. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Onnotice?
Thank you. And, you know, thank you all for your comments tonight. Mr. Olympio, I don't think you have anything to be sorry for. And I, I hope everyone who is watching tonight has heard the passion in the voice of my colleagues here, because there's not a group of people that I can imagine anywhere that cares more about the success, health, and safety of our students and our staff, and every single person falls under the PBD public school system. And I mean that wholeheartedly. I sat here and was probably as passionate as I have ever been in four years in this room when we were deciding whether to reopen. It was because I based my information off the science at the time and the reasonable fears that I felt people had at that moment, where there was many more unknown factors at that time. And we are now, what, six or seven months past that at this point. We have seen more evidence after more evidence that schools are a relatively safe place right now. They are not vectors of transmission. Matched with the fact that we are seeing the vacs, many vaccines start to come. I think we're getting more, they've talked about, I think it's the Johnson &amp; Johnson and some other vaccines that I believe may only be one shot soon to potentially be approved by the FDA. So again, every day, we're getting closer and closer here. And this letter that we sent, you know, we know that teachers have been moved up already. We are getting there. We are getting very close. And I think we have all heard on the news, I, I don't know if anyone else saw it, but it, it certainly sent, you know, alarm bells off with me. I think there was one poor district out in the Midwest somewhere, that just in their own school district, they had 19 suicides of students, 19 suicides of, of school students. I think one was as young as, I don't know if it was 11 or nine, it was an incredibly young age. And I said to myself, my God, the impact this is, I mean, I can't, there, there's no one, there is no one out there who hasn't had an impact from the environment that we're living in. People are angrier, they're more depressed, and they are just dying to get out of this. We're all going through this right now. We have, all have to make shared sacrifices. Yes, some people have different work schedules, what have you, but we all have an obligation as a community to step up here and be in our role. And I'll tell you, our teachers have stepped up time and time again. And I've talked to more and more of them that say, we wish we could be back, because they know that their students are suffering, and they want to be there with them. And they see the reasonable accommodations that are being made. I, I'll tell you right now, I, I want our, as a first step now, now if we could do it. And I would vote for it tonight if we could. I know we have, you know, union aspects that need to go into it. But I would absolutely support bringing up at-risk students back, not just Wednesday, but probably more than that, quite frankly. I think that's where we're getting at this point, that we are seeing reasonable levels of safety right now. And we need to be realistic, that we, as Mrs. Dunn has said, we balance safety, science, and the responsibility that we have here to provide a sound education to our students. That's the balance we have struck. And it is disappointing to see that this can become personal, when in reality, I think that we have struck an excellent balance going forward, more so than others. Because you know what? You look at other You look at other states, there are plenty of places across the country where kids have not been in school since March, since March. And we went back in September in some capacity, in a hybrid capacity. So we struck that balance, and we struck it well. You know, as I said at the time, we are, we were the experiment. We had that conversation, and look, we were successful. Our numbers are going significantly down. We're past the holiday surge. We're getting there, we're getting really close. And I think we have to start taking reasonable steps to get that going here. But, you know, infighting and divisiveness and attacks on people who, I'll tell you, step up to serve on a board, it's not a luxurious job we have here by any means. I think we all know that. You want a real experience serving a school committee, because I'll tell you right now, the reason we do this is because we want to see our students and our city be successful. That's why we're here, that's why everyone who works for the school system does this job and goes out there every day and fights for our students. So thank you all for your comments tonight, and I think we certainly do have work to do, and let's get going on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anotis. Appreciate everybody's heartfelt comments. Mr. Miko briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one more thing to add, and Mr. Olympio, that was fantastic, and you and your wife Cindy and your family are incredible champions for autism, and thank you. Don't ever apologize for the way you feel, because you give so much to the city. So thank you. Andrew, excuse me, Mr. Anotis, you're right on. And last March, I remember you and I were in that kitchen helping the staff, along with Dr. Lord, we remember that, when everything hit?
I think I blacked that out, actually.
We remember that day, and we'll always have that day, when that fantastic staff was baking sandwiches for kids. And we have to remember two things about this whole pandemic, too, is the education gaps and the safety that schools provide for students. As a teacher, I have kids who are seventh, eighth graders, and a lot of the kids that I see have education gaps, and it's very difficult for them to get to the next level. A lot of them do, some of them can't. We can't afford our kids here in PIBD to have those education gaps, because some of them will recover, but some of them will not, and we can't afford that. The other thing is, a lot of our kids are not safe at their homes. You know, we would think that they are, but some kids aren't safe at their homes. The safest place for kids are in schools, and I would support it 100%. As a teacher, if I could go back into a classroom right now, I'd take my kids in a minute. As a parent, I want my kids in classrooms. And as a school committee member representing the city, I want kids in classrooms full-time. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Dunn briefly?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Picking up on something Mr. Miko said, we are doing everything possible to do the balancing act between providing education to our students. We know specific students need a lot more, and that really does need to be looked at. But I'd also like to ask, going forward, this is the time when we should look at what can we do better? Because this is a time, we've been in school since September, we really do need to evaluate what we're doing, see what we can do better. I've been receiving a lot of letters and messages from parents who are upset about the amount of time that the students are in active learning. And I've also received information, I'm sorry, questions about where we stand with those new DESE requirements that came out in December, as far as the timelines. And I'd like to ask if we could get information on that. Not tonight, Dr. Vidal, because I know that's a pretty big amount of work to look at. But I do think we need to evaluate that. That would also help many of the people who are concerned about their children's education to make sure that we are giving the students as much time as possible. The teachers, I know, the teachers are working nonstop to teach in a way they never had to before. They're juggling all kinds of issues that we may not even realize, dealing with online courses, they're dealing with the internet, which goes down all the time, and it's really just very, very different, very frustrating. But I would like to ask if we could get that information. Thanks, Dr. Vidal.
I can speak to that. So I can speak to the structured learning time. We were not identified as a district needing to change our model, so we are meeting the current structured learning time, and I can submit to the committee the submission that we had that was approved by DSSY.
Okay, thank you. That would probably help.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Huckman briefly?
Very, very briefly. I just wanted to say, after listening to all of you tonight, how proud I am to be a member of this committee, how courageous you all are, how professional you all are, and how dedicated you are. And then just one last closing comment, because many of you have hit on it tonight. I'm going to say it loud and clear, we all, all of us, respect every single teacher in this district. None of us intentionally disrespect any teacher in this district. If there's ever a time where any member of our staff, teacher, administrator, paraprofessional, crossing guard, food services, transportation, feels as if this committee is disrespecting you, please, please let us know, because we'd like to address it. We don't want anything but the best for our staff and our students.
Well said, Mr. Huckman. Mr. Huckman, well said, everybody.
That's the end of my report.
That was longer than my motion.
Thank you, everyone, for your heartfelt comments. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter, for that report. School safety?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the mayor, superintendent, Dr. Vidal, committee member Carpenter, for your efforts in getting parents to be able to attend hockey games at the rink here in PIBD, the McVan Rink. It was something that was important to a small group of people. There aren't many hockey players, the teams are relatively small, but it was a meaningful effort, and you guys worked really hard to get that done, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We are scheduling a meeting next week. We were working with Dr. Vidal for a convenient evening to meet about the continuing issue of memorials. And also, and Dr. Vidal, you may not want to come to this part of the meeting, but we need to review the bylaws, which is just a performer, you know, going through them, but you're always welcome to come to that one. And we will give you all an informational email about what date that's scheduled for. So thank you.
Thank you. Parent and student advisory boards, Mrs. Dunn?
Again, we are scheduling a parent advisory board meeting. It is tentative for the first week of February, and just confirming that with some of the PTO members, just to make sure we don't interfere with the PTO meetings.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building your grounds, Mr. Miko?
Sure. Through the mayor, through the committee, McCarthy School Playground is in dire need of repairs. I brought that to the attention of the superintendent and the mayor, and more information will be coming. We're going to look at all alternatives there. Also, we made a motion earlier for the roof of the West School.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Miko. And Mrs. Dunn?
Could I just ask a question? Is there anything specifically that happened to the playground?
And I can, Dr. Vidal, against that, but I believe it's just wear and tear over the years, and it's used quite a bit from different programs over the years.
They're also having some issues, the integrated preschool and accessibility, so we want to really look at it. And now that they have a number of integrated preschool classrooms there, the population has increased over the years, and so we just want to make sure that it's accessible for our three- and four-year-olds as well.
I'm sorry, I'm just surprised, it seems like that one was done fairly recently, but I can't remember.
Well, there are two of them.
Right, right. One was through fundraising and one was a complete donation, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Mr. Miko made the report. Dr. Vidal and I and Mr. Miko have been in touch with Jen Davis, our park director, and we'll be meeting and having some discussions to see what we can do.
Sure, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Miko. Special education, parent advisory board, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report right now.
Okay. City council and legislative delegation, Mr. Anotis?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Huckman, any report on the redistricting committee?
Yeah, unfortunately, we had to postpone last night's meeting, but we do have a meeting scheduled for February 22.
Great. Okay, everyone, new business, I don't see any today. Let's, items for our next meeting can be handled in the regular course. Our next school committee meeting is going to be February 9, 2001, here at the Higgins Middle School Library, starting at 7:00 PM.
2001?
What did I say?
I think you said 2001.
It was a good year.
Anything but 2020. All right. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting.
Most of you enjoyed it.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman.